City Council Special Meeting. Today is Monday, April 22nd, 2024. I call this meeting to order. This time, Councilmember Willis, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the Father of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson?
Here.
Mayor Protem Callum?
Here.
Mayor Morrison?
Here.
Councilmember Willis?
Here.
Thank you all for being here, and again, thank you all for joining us today here at chambers and online participating. With that, today is a special council meeting, and we do have the approval of Agenda as Written or with amendments. We have one item for discussion. Counsel? Any changes or keep it as written? If so, looking for a motion to approve Agenda as Written.
I'll make a motion we approve the agenda as written.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Mayor Protem Callum, second by Councilmember Jackson to approve the agenda as written. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll. Oh, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Mayor Protem Callum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
We're at the public participation portion of the meeting. If you did intend to fill out a card, please bring one forward. I do have one here. First one is from Peg Schaller.
Good afternoon. Thank you everybody for being here. I just want to say that I have been working pretty closely with Todd on the fact finding mission, and that's not yet complete. We've had some things that we've agreed on, it said, yep, we agreed. Mistake or wrong mistake. Different perceptions, thank you. But we've agreed on that. So I just want to thank the council, and particularly Todd, for working so diligently with me to get this right. We last meeting reviewed the amphitheater, and what a great space that's going to be, with food trucks and a place for neighbors to gather and to walk their dogs and to play with their kids. And that is going to come at a big cost. That's going to be a big cost of your time, because that's going to be a lot of reviewing. That's going to be a big cost of taxpayers' dollars, because that takes it. And I am super excited about it. But I also provide an amenity to the city that didn't cost taxpayers a cent. But it is costing your time. And I just want you to know how valuable it is to have your time. And I want to continue to be an amenity in our city. So when you go to a meeting like this, you think, gosh, we're still talking about this? We're still doing this? This is a, this is a fraction of what other amenities in the city are going to cost you. So I appreciate your time, and I appreciate the council's willingness to make sure we get this right, because it's super important for our city that we're on the right track, supporting not only businesses, but my taxes help pay for the other amenities that I would like to see in the city. So thank you for your time and effort. And I don't want you to think that, gosh, this is a waste of time. We're beating a dead horse. This is absolutely not a dead horse. This is vital to the success of our city. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes any physical cards. If you didn't intend to speak, please raise your hand. Okay, seeing no hands raised, those of you who are online, we ask the same. If you do intend to speak, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands raised, we'll go ahead and close public participation portion of the meeting, bring it back to the one item for discussion, which is to review of Community and Economic Development Department roles, responsibilities, and discuss actions proposed to resolve current issues for properties located on Fillmore and Jackson Avenue. Today, we have the opportunity to talk about this again when it was originally put on the agenda back.
The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
The January 24th special meeting, we brought an issue forward that really did have the intent of improving the city, making it better and learning, really, within the Building Department and Code Enforcement, two specific instances, to get it right. And we are tracking through that process today. And my hope is to break this into two, spend a little bit of time on Fillmore, and then move to Jackson. And so the, as far as any agenda items, I did reprint the original January 24th update that we received in March. It's an identical copy of that. I'd like to distribute that to the council. So this was the informational item number nine in the March council meeting. I do have one more if we need it. And so the... When we look at these two projects or these two properties, my hope today is that we can start with number one, spend as much time as we need to try and receive an update and see anything that's changed from the last March meeting. And then, certainly if council or city staff would like to provide any comments, that would be helpful as well. And to try and move through these as expeditiously as possible with an emphasis on item number two when we get there, of the engineering report. If we could have the opportunity to ask questions and to do a review of that, that would be where I think time spent on that first one would be most impactful. And then continued item three, four, and five. And so... It's 1:08 now, and so perhaps after an hour, we do, we do a hard stop and then try and shift over to Jackson so we can all get back to our days and work on making progress. So with that, I do want to pause. Counsel? The goal to go through one through five on Fillmore in the exact order provided. Work with staff on any updates, ask any questions, and we'll move through them. Does that sound okay?
What about Kimberly Horn? You've talked about both here.
So the emphasis on item number two, I believe Kimberly Horn is going to be very supportive to help with the engineering report they provided and paired. Okay. Before we start, City Manager, thank you for being here. I appreciate your time and all those who are with us on behalf of the City of Cape Canaveral. Do you have any comments or concerns with starting number one through five and working off that last update?
Thank you, Mayor. I wasn't sure I was going to be able to be here. I was quite ill yesterday. I'm still a little bit wobbly today. So if I bolt out that door, that's why I'm doing that. And I apologize if that happens. I don't have the one through five in front of me that you're looking at? Maybe if you have copies that could be distributed?
One more. There you go.
Thank you. And the only other thing I was going to add, Mayor, was I do appreciate Ms. Schaller for spending your time with me to go through this. I know it is taking a lot of your time away from your personal life and your business to go through these things. But together, we are moving forward on a lot of important clarifications. And I feel very confident, as she does, that we are getting to the bottom of things for the actual truth that they are. One of the things I've always said, there's three sides every story. There's your side, their side, and then there's the truth. And getting to that truth, that last part, that we can all agree on, yes, that's what happened. That is where we begin to make corrective actions happen. And we're very close to that. We are there on a couple of them, actually. I think there's six enumerated items. I think half of them were there. The other ones, when I met with her last time, she threw additional information at me that was very helpful that I hadn't focused on prior. I'm going to be digging into that this week with staff. And I suspect that all of that will be ready for... What I'm requesting is the City Council meet again on the reserved date of May 7th to review the report of findings, not only on Jackson Avenue, but also on Fillmore Avenue. At that point, I feel very confident that I will be there, that third side of the story on every item. Mayor.
Thank you. The May 7th is the reserve date?
Yes, sir. For City Council meeting.
Would it be helpful if that date? I think that's a great idea, to come back and meet. Is that what you're?
Yes, sir.
Shooting for?
To review the report of findings in detail.
Counsel, does that work for you? Because we could get that out of the way now and go ahead and schedule that next meeting.
I'll make a motion we do schedule that meeting to allow the City Manager to complete his findings and his investigation.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Willis, second by Councilmember Davis. Any further discussion on the May 7th meeting?
What time would that be?
I'm fine with... Kim, is 4:30 too early for you?
That's fine.
4:30 could work. And Mayor, just to clarify that, we'll cover both Fillmore and Jackson.
Okay. 4:30 PM, May 7th, covering Fillmore and Jackson.
With a report of findings. Now, from that report of findings, I expect that we'll be very far along also on conclusions and recommendations. But a formal conclusions and recommendations would follow that at another date.
Thank you. Okay. Any other discussion, Counsel? City Manager?
No, sir.
Please call the vote.
Councilmember Davis?
Four.
Councilmember Jackson?
Four.
Councilmember Callum?
Four.
Mayor Morrison?
Four.
Councilmember Willis?
Four.
Thank you. With that, bringing it back here to this item, I think that's going to speed up. Obviously, the findings is a part of this report. But, but starting with Fillmore Avenue, the summary here is helpful, which staff worked on and provided. And to reemphasize, at the January 24th, 2024 City Council Special Meeting, council reviewed the Community and Economic Development roles and responsibilities and discussed actions proposed to resolve the current issues for properties located at 304 to 316 Fillmore Avenue and 116, 120 Jackson Avenue. This is the status update of these items, starting with 304 to 316 Fillmore Avenue. Item number one was to obtain and distribute to the City Council a building permit inspections report showing date, type of inspection, and disposition. And in the case of failed inspections, cited codes and any inspector notes. This report applies to all codes applicable to all permitted construction performed at 304, 306, 314, and 316 Fillmore Avenue, including the building official statement that all necessary inspections were ultimately approved. So this first one here, I think this... The update that we provided from staff was see Attachment 2. Attachment 2... Was a BSNA-generated report that showed property information, permit information, inspections, comments. And I think that... City Manager, is this one, one that you're saying is complete? I, I think that it's, from my perspective.
From that date, it was complete, yes, sir. Dave, is there any?
Are there any changes, I guess?
No changes to that.
So I recall this item included a request for the building official to make a written statement. I'm going off memory. I don't have benefit of what the council has in front of them. And last time we spoke about this, the building, if this question was raised, and I indicated that I was not going to speak on behalf of the building official, but that more than likely, he would not be willing to make that written statement, what was being requested, until the project was completed. And so I don't think that has changed either.
Thank you, Dave.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, are there any comments after that update? It's, if so, please, no particular order for item number one.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would think any clarification that would be made would be made in the City Manager's report, if there is any. So I am, I am satisfied with waiting for that report to clarify anything.
I think that for this one, this is what was provided at the March meeting, is the building permit inspections report. And I think it's complete other than the statement from the building official. Is that?
That's my understanding as well.
So we've received that report? And I'm asking, is?
I don't mean to speak for Councilmember Willis. Perhaps you might clarify that. If there is anything additional to be clarified, it will be clarified in that report coming, forthcoming.
In the findings report?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other comments, Counsel, on this one? The next one is item number two. Obtain an engineering report of existing site conditions and a review of all site-related permit documents submitted by Allen Engineering and former City Engineer John Picar for all site-related permitted construction performed at 304, 306, 314, and 316 Fillmore Avenue, approved plans, letters, and calculations. The purpose and scope of the report is the intent, is intended to ensure that the original design, as revised, meets or exceeds all applicable city codes related to site development, including but not limited to the onsite stormwater drainage system and its connection to the municipal stormwater drainage system. The report shall note any improvements which deviate from original plans and indicate whether such deviation complies with city code, or if not, recommendations for modifications necessary to comply with city code. Note, particular attention shall be given to a revision related to the municipal stormwater inlet in the driveway of 306 Fillmore Ave., to which the onsite stormwater drainage system is connected. In the original plan, a new storm inlet was to be located to the east of the old original inlet. But the revision called for the old inlet to remain in its original location. A connecting pipe size was changed to accommodate. The response at the March meeting we received from City is Kimberly and Horn Associates KHA proposal for civil engineering services was approved on February 20th, 2024. See Attachment 3, which we did have, and it was provided. Staff walked the site with KHA engineer on February 26th, and the engineering report at the time is forthcoming. And the proposal was forwarded to Council on February 21st. City Manager, any comments or updates? I think since then, we've talked about this. We've received the final report. I believe we were working on an executive summary.
Yeah, yeah, that's correct. And it might be helpful for the council and the audience to know that we have created a spreadsheet. We call it a tracking list of all things related to Fillmore that gets updated a couple of times a week and distributed to council. That includes this item, as well as all the steps through completion. So that is a public record. It's available, what everything that's happened to date. As, as the day's progressed, we put new entries in there. And this one included entries for the first draft interim report that came through, and then it was revised. Be clarified on a couple of things. And the, and the final, or that revision to that interim report was finalized. Staff was preparing, I'm going to call it a layman's terms summary of all that. I don't believe that was distributed yet, Dave?
No, we were waiting to have an opportunity to meet with you and go over the final draft before it's distributed.
But, but Kimberly Horn is here today, and I'm sure they're capable of delivering that layman's terms draft verbally. And, but we'll be glad to follow up with that other one as well, sir.
Thank you. And thank you, Kimberly Horn and your team, for being here today. Counsel, any comments? I would like to have the opportunity to talk through the engineering report and some of the major findings before doing so, if willing. Thank you, Lexi. I think that report was emailed by you to the council recently. I don't have five copies of that, but...
So Kimberly Horn is here today. We have Kyle Cosby, who authored the report, and Tucker Hunter, who helps oversee the office that we work with for Kimberly Horn. They did bring copies of both. So the report itself is about 100 pages. So we didn't print five copies of that today. We did, however, print the memo. So that was originally drafted by Kyle, as well as the approved design plans, the approved ASBILs. And then, and Kyle also prepared a presentation, just a few slides, and that was printed as well. So you'll have it on your screen in front of you. You'll have it printed. And then, I know plans can be a little bit hard to see on smaller screens. So just, Kyle's going to do his best to kind of click through it. And, you know, if you have any questions, feel free to reference either the printed copy in front of you or the screen, and he can, he can kind of walk through that. But he's here to kind of give an overview, talk about the report, and answer any questions.
Thank you. That sounds excellent, Counsel. And obviously, between now and the February 7th meeting, if any more questions come up, we can potentially work through them then. Thank you, Lexi. I think that's a great next step. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Counsel. My name's Kyle Cosby. I'm a professional engineer of the state of Florida with Kimberly Horn Associates. And I prepared the stormwater review for the Villas at Fillmore Ave. So just a brief project overview of the site. This is the site here. What's constructed is two duplex buildings. And in the middle of those two buildings is... You can, you can't even see my mouse. But in the middle of the two buildings is going to be the outfall structure that we referred to in this presentation. And then, as the mayor alluded to earlier, that's the inlet to the south of the driveway. That's the inlet in question, where you have the connection of the, the outfall structure into that existing inlet. So what I wanted to kind of go over is just a brief timeline. We got, so the project was approved back in 2020. Construction and CO, certificate of occupancy, was, was released in 2022. City contacted Kimberly Horn in January of this, of this year. And then, we were, we prepared a task order. That task order was signed on February 20th. I performed initial site visit of the site. I'll get to that later, about what I was able to see. And then, we prepared the initial report in March 15th. And then, the final copy that you guys have in front of you was April 4th. So the scope of the task order, just briefly, was to perform a site visit to review existing conditions of the site. I do want to state that the existing conditions of the site, when I went out there, there was FPL that was performing work on the power pole that was in the back there. So they kind of disturbed some of the retention area in the back. I was to review the project documents, upload BSNA, which is the city's permitting portal, and then compare the ASBILs with the approved plans and identify any deviations that, that were notified. And then, prepare a stormwater memo summarizing the findings, recommendations based off the approved plans that were approved in 2020 and the city code. So as you guys have in front of you, you guys have the approved plans. I just want to just kind of go over a couple of design elements of those approved plans. So as you can see in the approved plans, the retention area wraps around all sides of both buildings. And then, that water will collect into a yard drain, which is the outfall structure, a 24-inch outfall structure that then will convey through a 12-inch pipe to a proposed inlet that was supposed to be between the two driveways. And then, that was going to connect in with an 18-inch pipe into the existing municipal inlet. Now, I'm showing the ASBILs. And as you can see in the ASBILs, you can see there is the pipe connection tying directly into the existing inlet, as opposed to having the connection to the proposed inlet and then connecting in. Also, note on the ASBILs is that the retention area bottom is actually a foot higher than what the design plan's called for. So the design plan's called for the bottom of the pond to be at elevation eight, and it was at elevation nine per the ASBILs. There's also some, some information just missing from the ASBILs. Like, you can't clearly tell where the, the top of the retention area is, begins to collect water. So part of my site visit was to determine, you know, where the retention area extends, because all it's picked up is just the kind of flow path of the retention area. And then, you can see here, the yard drain is, is what that was constructed, was a 12-inch as opposed to a 24-inch. So just briefly, during my findings investigation, I have some photos I took on site. I just want to go over the approved plans. Based on the approved plans that I saw and the, and the calculations prepared by Allen Engineering, they state in their report that they're not meeting the water quantity requirement for the city. And what that means in layman's terms is that they're discharging more volume and runoff than the precondition. So when the site was undeveloped, it had a certain amount of runoff and discharge that was, that was entitled to. And in the proposed condition, they're discharging more. It is a minor increase, but it's still, it's still an increase in discharge, the runoff rates and the volumes. And then, when I went out to the site visit, as you can see here on the first photo in the upper left-hand corner, you can see that FPL power pole. You can see the disturbed soil kind of in the retention area there. And you'll see, I'm actually kind of standing exactly where that yard drain is located. But when I went and assessed the site, it appeared that the constructed retention, the retention system that was out there to date did not match the approved plans. The, like I mentioned earlier, the bottom elevation per the ASBILs was at elevation nine as opposed to eight, which means there's less storage in that retention system. And then, the retention area width kind of varied from section to section when I traveled back in the rears. It wasn't a consistent width. The approved plans had a 12-foot top width of basically the retention area, which is the swale that we're talking about. And there was just inconsistencies with the width. There were some sections where it was six, some sections where it was eight. So it didn't match the approved plans. Also, like I alluded to earlier, the outfall structure was a 12-inch that was constructed, but per the approved plans, a 24-inch outfall structure was supposed to be installed. The, also, the rim of that outfall structure was set lower to elevation 9.12 instead of the 9.25. And what that does is it allows water to get out faster, right? When you have a high, when you have a higher bottom and a lower weir elevation, essentially, you have less volume. So that causes water kind of go out faster, essentially. And, and then, so on the ASBILs, they didn't have enough information. They didn't provide information on the size of the pipe that was running to the existing inlet at the driveway. So I took a measured down photo that you can see on the lower right-hand corner to confirm it was actually a 12-inch pipe per the design. And then, as I stated earlier, that proposed type C structure was not installed. Instead, that 12-inch pipe just tied directly into the inlet. So recommendations, since this project was approved, this plan was approved, Kimberly Horn recommends that the stormwater management system should be reconstructed to be consistent with the approved plans. And that means the retention area and piping associated with it. And then, new ASBILs should be provided once the stormwater management system has been reconstructed with adequate details so that we can ensure that those plans are consistent with the approved plans, the ASBILs. And then, any further modifications to the retention area should be reviewed by city staff to ensure that the peak discharge rates and runoff volumes don't further increase and that the water, the treatment volume... and that the water, the treatment volume is still provided. And then, remedies for the existing inlet is to basically install that type C structure and modify the existing structure per the approved plans. And the approved plans, that existing structure was supposed to be raised up slightly and then, and then covered so that it was consistent with the driveway slope. And then, if that's not, if that's not able to be, if that's not feasible, then there is some option to regrade the driveways of lots two and, one and two, and then raise the existing inlet a tad, just making sure that that's still a low point in the road because that collects the drainage from the road. And then, you can smooth out that slope transition from the driveway. And that's basically it. I just wanted to kind of go over briefly and then I'm here to answer any questions. Be happy to.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I do have a question. The review of Mr., the former engineer's letters, was that a part of the scope?
Yes, there was three letters that were in the PSA that was, I had access to. One letter here, the previous engineer approved the design plan back in 2020. And then, there was another one where he reviewed the, let me see here, let me pull So, yeah, on December 2nd, 2020, the, the previous city engineer approved the site plan, basically reviewed the updated site plan and recorded plaque for Fillmore Townhomes and recommended city approval for each. And then, on August 5th, 2022, he reviewed the record drawings that were submitted by Alan Engineering and he noted kind of similar deviations that I have noted in my report. So, he noted that there appeared that the cross-sections were inconsistent. He also noticed that the bottom elevation was higher than the design and recommended that the engineer should approve this construction, ensure that does not impact the drainage, storage calculations, so that make sure there's still enough volume per the design. He noted the, the, that the plans indicated the 24 top, the 24 structure, outfall structure as opposed to the 12-inch. And then, on August, let's see here, and then August 17th is when the COs were issued for the 316 and 314 Fillmore Ave sites. And then, the certificate of occupancy was issued on October 6th for 306 and 304. And then, on December, let's see, no, that's the same one. On, let's see. There's also a letter in there from the previous engineer where he went to the site to look at the existing conditions and noticed that the construction, the constructed swell, retention area didn't match of the approved plans.
Yeah, that was. I think that was October, the day before the COs was issued, October 5th. And that was the final one.
That was the final one I saw as well.
And so, was there any, I guess, verification or any issues with the review of the prior city engineer's recommendations? Was there anything that was being recommended by the former city engineer that Kim Lee Horn today would, in their findings, not align with or see the same way?
No, so, no, I, I agree with what John Picard put together, but I don't have any information on if Alan Engineering responded back to those, those demands or those comments that the city engineer had.
And from your field observation, some of those did not happen?
Yes, that's correct.
And the ASBILTS, the timing, I assume you reviewed obviously the ASBILTS. The timing of the ASBILT, that first letter from Mr. Picard that you referenced on August 5th, 2022, was that looking at the drawings of the ASBILT?
That's, that's what he appeared to reference. I don't know if that was the exact copy of the record drawings or if he had a previous version, but it said that he reviewed the Alan Engineering record drawings for the Villas at Fillmore. And he noted similar deviations that I noted.
So, the approved plans, when you, it references the approved plans versus the revised plans? Is the revised plans the ASBILT or?
The revised plans would be once FPL is done with removing the power pole, that the retention area get reconstructed back to the original approved plans.
So, the end goal and recommendation of Kim Lee and Horn is to do these things to get it back to the original plans because that was the major pain point for, I think, the homeowners that I spoke with is that they want the home to match up with the original engineer drawings and if those recommendations are followed from the scope of what you focused on, they will result in matching up?
Yeah.
Okay. Counsel, any other questions? That's all I had at this time.
I have one.
Yes, please.
When you went out and took a look at the back area, the at, I believe it's 306 and the one next to it, the in-between that has the drainage, drain in there that's 12 inches, literally the swale doesn't line up.
Yeah, no.
And from what I'm seeing on the ASBILT and then what it should, the approved plan, that should line up, correct?
What should line up? The, what out there?
The actual, there's a ditch, yeah, that actual ditch that's the swell for drainage.
Yeah, it should align up with the ASBILT. But, the ASBILT doesn't have a lot of information on it. It doesn't show you the profile of that swale.
Right.
It only gives you the flow path, so there was no way in determining what that, what that cross-section looked like when the ASBILT was submitted, but I, I can tell you what the cross-section looked like when I was out there just doing my field review. There could have been a difference.
Okay, so if they go by the ASBILT, so would you, are you recommending they go by the ASBILT or the original plan? I'm taking it the original plan.
The original approved plans by Alan Engineering, yep.
Okay. And then also, that 12-inch drain versus a 24-inch drain, there's literally, it's really, the swell is really low compared to where the drain is.
Yeah.
So, I'm taking it, it's, that's for it to get to a certain elevation before it drains over into the storm system.
Yes, that's to treat the water, yep. It's, St. John's requires the first flush of runoff, so when runoff hits pavement or roof, it collects dust and debris and pollutants. And so, you need an area for that first flush water runoff to generate, go to, clean up, and then it can discharge out clean water.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a quick question. On the, I've visited the site, but I don't remember exactly if the pavers on the ASBILT match up with the pavers on the preferred plan. It looks as though some pavers are going to have to be removed in order to fulfill the AS, the preferred plan on the, on the side.
Yes, because of the, because of the retention area coming more, it's, it's actually going to be further south now. It's like, I, I can see what you say, yes. Looks like there might be some modification to the pavers.
Okay. How much of an impact would that have because I don't know if the homeowners are happy with the pavers or not?
I don't know the impact. It would be the pavers that are north of the doors.
Right.
So, it looks like it's just these pavers here that would be going away on both sides of the units for, to be able to reconstruct the retention pond to match the approved plans.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem, any questions? Councilmember Davis?
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate your time and, and all the hard work you put into helping us. Thank you. City, yes, I was, city manager?
I just wanted to clarify because I don't think we'll be hitting this in the steps document that you have here, that the, we did meet with the contractor and he was instructed to follow Kim Lee Horn's interim draft report precisely, including there's two options there. Pick one of those options. Whichever option he chooses, he needs to comply with the conditions of that options. But, that requires a revised document. That plan is going to be the responsibility of the contractor to obtain that plan and he has been striving to get that revised document from Alan Engineering. Not quite sure what the status is of that. Maybe Dave has an update. But, the purpose of getting that revised plan, I want to make very clear for the record, that will be the document that accompanies the permit, the city issues to reconstruct the swale and do all corrective actions. That is forthcoming, is, that's in the contractor, the ball is in the contractor's court right now to get that revised document, bring it in, get a permit application going. We'll review it. It'll be sent to Kim Lee Horn for review. If you approve it, then, and there's no other comments, we will issue that permit and the reconstructive work can happen from that point, Mayor.
Thank you. And those were, when we go to the Kim Lee Horn recommendations, the revision on, is that mentioned? I guess where does that come from?
The options listed there? I don't have it.
Yeah, I'm on page five, the recommendations. Okay, the last existing inlet remediation options, one and two?
Really, this whole page they need to comply with, Mayor.
Yeah. It's, it's basically all the recommendations and the recommendations break it down into each kind of system. So, you got the retention area, you've got the yard drain, you've got the inlet. Those are kind of like the three things that make up that stormwater system. So, we gave recommendations to mitigate each, but the long story short is just reverend back to what was approved by the city back in 2020. And keeping as close to that design as possible. So, I was involved during the design and permitting of the original approved plan. So, I don't have the answer to why it was constructed, the way it was constructed opposed to, you know, aligning with the approved plan. So, there might be some input from Alan Engineering. They say, hey, we couldn't, we couldn't do that proposed structure for XYZ. So, that's why that section, that second option on the inlet remediations there for, you know, possibly raising that inlet up just slightly, regrading the driveways so that it's a better slope transition. Because right now, it's a pretty big slope transition from that existing inlet to that driveway.
On that second option?
Yep.
Where is that gas line that would need to be moved? As I'm looking at, I'm looking at the proposed original plan?
Yeah, so it's right in between the green space. When I was out there on the site, I have a picture of it. See if I can pull that up. But, I had a picture of it. It was basically right in the green area between the two driveways. There was a gas line flagged and then there was a, there was a water line flagged in that area.
Okay. So, in between the driveways, you said?
In between the driveways of Lot 2 and Lot 3, so between the two buildings.
Perfect, thank you.
In that, yep, in that green space, yep.
And, and this report, Mayor, just says either of those options are acceptable to meet the city code.
And, but one of them would conflict with the original design?
The one of them would conflict with the original design. That's if Alan Engineering came back and said they couldn't, they had to tie it to this structure, right?
Okay. And how would we approach that? Okay, that, that could be, and the, the request of the owners is they want to get it back to the original design and so, if I understand, in the event Alan Engineering comes back and says they can't do that, a new design would have to be approved by?
The way that this has been explained to the contractor is that these are options available to the contractor to have the, the plans revised to show which option you're doing and then submit that for building permit and review to Kim Lee Horn.
Okay, and the owners will be involved in that?
At, at this point, I'd, I'd like to hear from the owners on that. I don't know if the owners are here.
Well, I think if we're, the, the request to restore it to the original design, if it can't happen, I think if something else happens in their yard, they should have a say.
I, I think we're assuming that the, the location of that box and that space between the grass space is the preferred location. And I would too. And I look at that and I say, I, I think that's the preferred location from an aesthetic perspective at least. So, I think at this point, we should clarify, Mayor, that it is our goal and intention that that be the preferred place for it and if it cannot be, then explain why it cannot be. And then, the other option is the second choice. Can we all agree on that?
As the options, yes, I think it sounds like that's
Okay.
the two. And both of them might be better than what exists today. I don't, no, I think my, my request would be that the, if the contractor says yes when we're on other property where they may not have, a preference is appreciated and I think any other areas, obviously, they should be involved on the findings and recommendations where it does fall within their property lines.
We'll be sure to create correspondence to the contractor on that point, Dave, that there's a preferred option A and if it's not available, explain why and then option B is available.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mayor Protem?
Just have a question, maybe for Todd. How long will this take with the contractor to revise the plan and, and get this work done, permitting and all that?
Kind of a crystal ball question. Dave, I think you're closer to that industry than I am. How long do these things typically take?
I mean, are we talking years, months?
I wouldn't think years.
Not years. Again, that's a very difficult question to answer. It depends on the contractor or, excuse me, the engineer's workload. If, if the contractor and the engineer are able to work out a mutually agreeable business arrangement, you know, we, we cannot force the contractor to say, you are going to use Alan Engineering. It would, it makes sense for them to use Alan's engineering because they've got a lot of the work already done and it would, you would think it would be expeditious and, and financially would be the way to go, but. So, anyway, saying all of that, I mean, I, I would think that they could get something like this done within 30 days.
Well, that's, is, as a city, we can't say, okay, this is what needs to be done and this is your timeline and, I mean?
We cannot say that, no.
You asked Anthony that.
Anthony, can we do that? Tell him they have so much time to get this done?
I think you can tell them that you would like it done by a certain time period, but as David indicated with respect to engineering and doing the necessary plans in order to get the permit and then Kim Lee Horn's permit review, you know, that, that, that could take a little bit. I mean, it's unpredictable. So, I mean, yeah, certainly can try to get them to do it by a certain time period, but it's going to be simple.
You know, the way this has dragged on forever.
Yes, we have and I'll, and I'll let Mayor Protem and the rest of the council know. I've already been in communication with both the contractor and the engineer, just emphasizing to both parties the importance and the urgency of these items. So, and I believe that I've, I believe I included that information in the update in the, in the task list that we send out, but I've, I've stressed that item at least several times to both parties on how important this is to come together. I, you know, I'm a little hesitant to get too involved in the, in the direct negotiations between the two parties, but I think from a city perspective, I've, I've, I've certainly let them know how important it is and how urgent it is.
And this, all of this change and everything is on the contractors? They have to pay for all this, not the homeowner?
We, we have not weighed in on that and talked about who, who's paying for what. That's not really something we typically ask for. We require a permit, we require a contractor's number and we require this work to be done.
So, it would be a negotiation? So it would be a negotiation between the contractor and the owners?
Hmm, I think it's going to be, well, my understanding is that the, uh, the, the, based on some comments I've heard from the contractor and the developer, that the, the, the financial obligations would lie somewhere between the two of them.
Well, I, if the contractor didn't do the plan as planned, why wouldn't he have to pay to fix it? But that's like a civil thing between?
Private, yep, parties.
Which leads me to a question. Uh, we've had this going on with Fillmore. And isn't this contractor working on another project right now on Jefferson or one of the other streets? Which really now makes me very nervous that we might end up in the exact same situation we're in right now. Is, is, is he working on another one, this contractor?
Um, yes.
And is that on Jefferson?
Yes.
Multi-unit like this?
Yes, almost. I'm not gonna say the identical project, but very, very similar.
Have we been wa, keeping an eye on that particular project?
Yes.
In light of this one? Cause it makes me, it makes me want to leave here right now and go out there and look at that one to see if we're gonna have the same mess on our hands.
We share your concern and we're also looking into that.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, any more questions for Kyle Kimley Horn? Thank you again.
Thank you.
So the, the, yeah, my big, uh, concern is just making sure that the property owners are involved in the decision-making process on which revision is really important. Because, I guess, you're saying that's not needed in the public right of way where they are, where the inlet is located, that their homeowners?
I'm sorry, missed the first part of the question. What was that?
It's in the right of way where the inlet is, the C on the southern end of the property?
Yes.
That, that would not require homeowners consent? Is that's municipal?
No, I, I think the homeowners, if they're here tonight, the message is clear that option A, the first choice, is to relocate the storm inlet to the green space between where the mailboxes are. And if it can't be for whatever reason, explain what that reason is. And then option B is acceptable if they follow the recommendation of Kimley Horn.
Okay, yeah. What I heard was that two options were recommended by the engineering firm. And the contractor will agree to do either option or is looking into
That has been clarified today. As of today, that's been clarified, that they're gonna be directed to option A. If not option A, why not? Explain that. We'll communicate that to the homeowners and then they'll have no choice but option B.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, counsel, on, on this? Talking about item number two, the engineering report? Okay. Let's move on. Unless, any other comments from our city manager staff?
None at this point.
Oh, sir. Thank you. Item number three was to request plans and confirmation on a date for FPL to remove overhead lines and reinstall all lines underground consistent with the city code. At the time, FPL did not, due to security concerns, FPL stated they generally do not provide electric utility plans. We learned that in, in March. And FPL has installed parallel underground service lines which are energized. Spectrum has begun removal of its overhead lines. Once they have completed their portion of the removal, FPL will remove its overhead lines. I think this has been, this would be, will be updated since the, I think last tax, task sheet showed this was complete. City manager, is this one that
Yeah, I think
we could say is finished?
Yeah, I think we can check this one off, sir.
May I throw something in there?
Yes, please.
Um, I would not consider this complete because when they removed the pole, they left around two and a half feet of rusted rebar with the broken end sticking up in the backyard, which is a safety issue to me. That should be definitely handled. It should not be sticking up where somebody could trip and fall on it.
The FPL left it or the?
I believe so. I believe it was FPL when they came and took the pole out. The owner can, uh, verify that for us. But so to me, it is right by the pole. And to me, that absolutely needs to be rectified.
Are we familiar with this?
This is the first I'm hearing about it, sir. Dave, do you know anything about it?
I'm familiar with it and I've already contacted FPL to rectify the situation.
Okay. And this is, this may not even be our place, but I'm gonna make it an ask anyway. We need to put something, foam, uh, tape, something needs to go over that until FPL gets out there. And it may not be our responsibility, but it needs to be.
Um, unless the city attorney advises otherwise, I have no problem asking staff to put a couple cones and caution tape out there.
The attorney?
Unless otherwise advised. I mean, as a drainage, public drainage easement emergency. Property owners don't like it, they can remove it.
All right.
Thank you.
I'd also like to mention something too on this item before we move on is that my understanding, or my, well, my belief is that FPNL worked outside of the public utility easement when they installed these parallel lines. I've brought this to the attention of FPNL, asked them to look into it. And that has not been resolved to my satisfaction yet. So that is a, another item that is yet to be, uh, put to bed.
And that was, I observed over the weekend as well. It looks like they went too far towards the house with the, with the utility easement and did not actually came through the yard for other ones when it should have been out in the easement itself.
Yeah, I agree. The, the work looks like it came too far south. Now, that is just a, that's strictly me eyeballing it. I can't sit here. I don't, I don't have benefit of a survey versus where the lines actually are located. Um, but I've brought that to their attention.
And I, I agree, Dave, from what I observed and took a look at, and that puts, you know, that, that's, needs to be rectified by FPL as well, simply because that is one of those things where somebody could dig into a, a power line since it's in the yard itself versus in the easement.
Okay, so this one, uh, I think some concerns on it being completed correctly with FPL are understood. And we're, we're working towards, I think, those, solving that, those issues. As far as the, the depth of lines being buried underground, uh, what, is that something that we follow behind FPL and, and check or do? Is that what issue was raised? I guess for the, I don't know if it's the portion that, from the hole to the, to the home and then with the swale and all the digging back there. Where, where does the city come in to ensure those all underground is covered properly?
The burial depth of underground conduits is covered in the elec, in FPL's electrical service standards manual. And they did this work by their own contractors, as I recall. And they have the authority to do that in their easement. And they are allowed to do it without benefit of a permit or inspections from the city as part of the franchise agreement.
I think that's part of the problem is that's why it's, things are sticking out of the ground. So we don't have any authority to go in and, and say, bury the, the rebar, the wire and, uh, your six inches opposed to whatever, two foot.
And you're in the backyard instead of the easement. And see, that's the thing that I see as a big issue. Because, um, the power companies, as well as cable companies and those types of vendors, they mark where lines are located and where they install them. And if they don't install them in, in the easement, they're not aware they're there. And when you need to dig in your yard, you call them to find out where the lines are. But if they're not in the spot that they said they were gonna be in, then you have an issue with someone hitting it with a shovel and go, you know, having a safety issue from it. So because of the fact they brought these, the, the, literally brought the infrastructure into the backyard versus their easement, you know, we've got an issue. But yeah, from my understanding as well, we were never able, even in, you know, when I was working in this environment with commercial buildings, we've, they told us where the easement was versus us being able to define it and that kind of thing. So how we would go about notifying them it's in the wrong spot, I, I guess, Dave, do you have any input on that?
Well, not, not any more than I've already stated here today. You know, as, as Todd said, they work without the requirement of permits and inspections.
Because they have design standards and
Correct.
the right to construct to those design standards in their franchise agreement.
But can, if they do not follow their own design standards, does the franchise agreement state that they will follow the design standards? And?
I, I think, I think what I'm hearing is that there's a dispute about whether or not they follow the design standards.
Just wires sticking out of the ground and the, the question from the homeowners about the depth throughout this whole process and how it's changed and whether or not, um, you know, when they come in to dig or alter the, the stormwater, the swale in the back, that's right where the lines go. And so, um, you know, I didn't read through all the details, but in general, it's, were the lines covered properly? Since this was just redone, uh, it just came to mind and
Okay.
I, I, I wanted to understand our role. And if it's a franchise agreement that has the design standards and we both signed the franchise agreement, seems to me we signed up for them to honor those and we could
That would be
leverage.
Yes, sir. I, I think that could be a, a review of the, of the, um, franchise agreement to say how we might dispute. Um, and insta, a particular installation is not in compliance with the design standards. That would, um, I would ask for Anthony's help on that, how we go about doing that, what our rights are there.
And Mayor Morrison, one, one thing that may work with us is since the easement work has to be done for the swell, um, and the drainage retention and all of that, maybe, um, requiring FPL to come out and mark the current locations of the cable will tell us and show them if it's in the wrong spot. If they go marking along the back part of the fence, which is the easement, um, I'm gonna tell you what I saw. It, it appeared, I'm actually in agreement with you, Dave. It appeared it went through the backyard at 306 versus out in the
306 and 314.
Yeah.
The two, the two outside units, I think the lines were maintained in the right of way, or excuse me, the easement. But I think the two internal units may, may be, may have a problem.
It appears that way. But if we ask them to mark those for the swell worker, if the developer does, um, as one of the steps that we need completed by him, that may help us in determining where FPL thinks it is.
I think it's, uh, clear. We'd like to figure out what we can do when these issues that no one, I think, is disagreeing with are physically visible and, um, concerning. So I know our city attorney talked about the franchise agreement and encouraging to make that a part of urgency. And I know we waited a while for them to, to do the work they did. And now hearing it's got issues, I think we all wonder, is this now gonna be get back in line essentially and wait another month?
I, I, I think, um, in, in hearing about all this today, I think, trying to think of the most logical way to approach this. And I think it's a twofold process. Dave, contact the, um, governmental affairs person with FPL. Let them know that there's been, uh, concern about the placement of the, uh, utilities in terms of their location in or out of the easement, but also the burial depth. We'd like them to confirm that all is kosher. And the other one is Anthony, looking at the franchise agreement and how we might approach this if we have, if we find that something is not kosher, how do we, how do we, what are our rights as a city? If we find something's not in the right place or at the right depth.
I mean, as, as I noted, I mean, they are subject to the Public Service Commission and Public Service Commission rules. So the city does have limited, some limited jurisdiction to, uh, enforce certain things. But if, if it's not in, in compliance with their tariff obligations, you know, if, if it's in the right of way, the city obviously has more of a direct stake. If it's on private property and it's a service line on private property, you know, the private property owner, you know, has some responsibility too, to notify the power company regarding, um, problems that they see on their, on their particular property. You know, in this particular case, I'd have to look through the franchise agreement I'm scrolling through right now. Um, because the city did not establish certain rules uh, for, for Florida power because it, the city can't because of the preemption under the Public Service Commission's jurisdiction. So I'd have to look at it a little bit more detail. But in terms of location, that I think is more of a straightforward issue. You know, the private property owners too can notify F, FPL if they have installed improvements that are outside of an easement. Because FPL, just like any other utility, needs to install their, their utilities within easement areas. And if it's outside of the easement area, then, you know, they need to, they don't have the right to be elsewhere. So that, that's a correction. And then I suspect when the ci, when they go, when the developer goes through and redoes the stormwater facility, that will trigger an 811 requirement, right, with respect to, uh, flagging utilities as well. So, you know, that's, that's gonna, that, that's gonna happen as well. And they will, regardless of whether the utilities are in the easement or not, they have to flag the utility where they, where they think that they're located. And, um, if they don't do anything, at the very least, when they flag 811, you'll find out where those utilities are located and whether or not they're in the easement area. Uh, but hopefully they can resolve that issue before then.
Yeah, I, I, and this was verbal conversations, but pardon?
Cause that'll, that could potentially delay
Yes.
the redoing of the drainage swale. Because the utilities need to be properly located in the right location, at the right depth.
Yeah. Yeah, I, in my verbal conversations with them, they indicated that they were gonna get a survey crew out there to identify exactly the, the location of the easement versus the lines. So whether they've done that or not, I don't know, but it's certainly on their radar screen and they're aware of the issue.
Is there, and is it on the task list for you to do continued follow-up on?
It will be put on the task list as of today
Okay.
to look into this location and depth issue, make sure FPL is aware of it, ask them to verify the location and depth.
Okay. Any other comments from anyone? That, uh, item number three of the five and the other two are really, I think, what we're, what will, we discussed and scheduled for May the 7th, if I understand, is number four is utilizing the engineering report above to exercise available remedies to gain compliance and identified city code-related deficiencies and report status updates to the city council. And then item number five, well, number four is the last status to stay consistent from our city staff was that awaiting a receipt of the KHI engineering report. I think we have that now, so we can
But, but we have identified a, a city code-related, um, item that will be in that report of findings.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments on number four? Counsel, seeing none. Item number five is city manager and city attorney to present any findings and/or opportunities in a report to be distributed to the city council on ways the city can improve our community development department. This is to be presented at a future council update. Is this something for May 7th or something after?
Something after.
Okay.
There's going to be probably multiple code revisions that come out of this that city attorney and Dave Dickey and I have been talking about. We think that there's, this is a good time to take advantage of this lesson learned to fix other things that could be those other trip spots because the codes have not kept up with practices and duties and responsibilities. I can't say we're going to catch them all, but I sure hope we do. I think we've got maybe a couple dozen.
Giving it our best shot.
Yeah, there, there's a lot in there that's just outdated.
A lot that needs to get tweaked. Not more, just more than tweaked, needs to get changed.
I look forward to that. I think in the order to summarize, item number one is partially complete. And I think the building official statement is something that we're working through. The engineering report, item number two, is complete. And we had a chance to have a nice overview of that. And I think any questions as we dig into it will be helpful. And as we watch this project changes happen, which is ultimately, I think, what we want. And then item number three, the big part is finished, but there's some loose ends with the condition of the wire rebar sticking out and also how we can utilize the PSC rules and our tariff to expedite and also verify, you know, what are, what we can inspect, what we, what standard we can hold to. And then four is going to be May 7th. And five will be ongoing, something we're going to work through, counsel. Are there any other comments on these five for Fillmore Avenue?
I have a question.
Yes.
Okay, so if the homeowner has some issues that are building-related, how, how, what is the proper mechanism for the homeowner? So for example, some railings that are not securely attached to the floors on balconies, vents that are out of code on the roof, things of that nature. What is the situation with that? Because I don't know what we would do in a case like that where we've already issued occupancy permits. But there's notable multiple other things that the property owner has that did not get built out to the site plans, such as the retain, the reclaimed water. They were supposed to get four connections. They got one that's in one of them's yard that feeds all four. Some of those things that were not swell-related.
City manager?
I, I'm a recovering building contractor. I, I was in the business for probably about 15 years. And I can tell you, and I'm also in my years in project management, it's always in the contractor's best, best interest to solve those with the homeowners by just calling them up and saying, hey, the thing is loose or it's missing a connection, come out and fix it. And that's typically what happens. In, in any case where we, we see a deficiency that is addressed by our code, it is a code enforcement thing. If we're called attention to it, and I'm not necessarily referring to Fillmore Avenue, but any place we go, if there's a problem, something's loose, there's a loose railing, that can become a code enforcement issue with, with owners to address that. Certainly, we don't want that to happen here. I'd encourage the owners to work with the first route, which is with the contractor directly.
So if the vents on the roof were not of, to code, that would be you guys that would, that need to contact us?
I would think if, if I was the builder, if there was something wrong, I don't know what the problem is, but if I was a builder, I would be out there taking care of it, especially if it, within a warranty period.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Dave, did you have anything to add to that?
No, sir.
Okay, so we're at 2:15 PM. We got through those first five. I think we should take a 10-minute break, recess. We'll reconvene back on Jackson. And at the end, if we need to circle back to anything, Fillmore and Jackson collectively, I think we can, we can do that. But no one opposed, take a 10-minute break, reconvene at just before 2:30. Or back then. Okay, take a recess, thank you.
I'll, I'll, I'll scratch the rebar.
Okay. We call the meeting back to order. It is 2:33 PM.
We need to unmute the mics. There we go. Thank you. And for those of you listening at home, thank you again for tuning in. We are in our special meeting today, going over the items. Information was provided back at the March 19th informational only item regarding the January 24, 2024 Special Council meeting. We just got through on the building side regarding Fillmore Avenue and now moving over towards code enforcement side regarding Jackson Avenue. Similar to Fillmore, we provided five tasks and I'd like to go through the same. And before doing so, just emphasize the goal here is to become better and to tackle an issue that has been a major challenge in this city for years dating back to the 2012 visioning and code enforcement has been a challenge. And so this has been, I think, so far since January, very informative and I appreciate the entire council's effort to stay on these tasks and try to see that they're through. And so with 116, 118, and 120 Jackson Avenue, if you're, yes, Councilmember Davis?
I just have a quick question. Earlier, we voted that we were going to wait for the findings from the city manager. So why, is there anything that we need to go over today that he would not be able to find, be, have finalized on the 7th? Or are, I just want to know why we're discussing it when he's, we're waiting for the report from the city manager?
Well, the findings as, the last time was item number four, or item number, yeah, it talks about remedies and also findings in items four and five. But again, that's one to two items really related to five. We have not received as a council and been in the same room, an intentionally placed agenda item to discuss the progress of all five. And so items one through five, my goal was to get an update and then to continue to provide these ongoing. And with that, we've scheduled a May 7th meeting to tackle one of the five. And so items were stated to be completed, but we have not discussed, I did express my, my concerns with what we are considering complete and some additional concerns on the, the data that was provided. And since then, we've had meetings that I've had the opportunity to be a part of, and I know this council has not, but we really haven't sat and went through and received an update since March, or have we really discussed it? And so that's the goal. But I agree with you, Councilmember Davis, that on the findings portion of it, I think city manager made it clear that it was, it was his intent to do both Fillmore and Jackson. And I think we can move right through that one, which is getting number five, the last. So with that, item number one, I'd like to go through is to provide a report showing all actions and correspondence related to code enforcement at 114, 116, 118, and 120 Jackson Avenue for the period from January 1st, 2016 through January 24th, 2024. The report shall include all records available, whether generated by the city's BSNA software system, or any other record storage method employed by the city's code enforcement department. The city staff provided a response to this item was split into two documents. Attachment four, which was provided at the March meeting, includes an update for the requested enforcement activity report. And it also says that the following folder was created for us in Laserfish that contains all of the responsive email correspondence with the link on how to access that folder in Laserfish. My, I think the comments here is that we are, I believe, still waiting on what I would say is a report showing all actions. Because when I went in to see the, these particular instances, I think we've discussed the issues. And I think we heard today from Ms. Schaller that she is optimistically working through them and to trying to overcome any concerns and questions in our city manager. But the, the public records folder, if you've had a chance to go in and look at that, it is very difficult to understand what those items are. And there are some limitations. If you do not have Microsoft Office email, when you click on them, I think you have to have some third party to be able to actually view those records. And so that is what I would say is data that is to support the timeframe and certainly requested. But my hope is they take that in combination of the field notes. And the goal was to be able to see 114, 16, 18, and 120 over that period in a report style format that shows history and all actions taken. And so I think that this is still very important. I also think that this was the most attainable, easiest win. And what I'm saying is, is what was provided in March, we are working to, to revise. And I want to make sure the council still believes this is important. This is not a matter of findings. This is simply showing what the city's actions have been on those addresses over that period of time. And I hope we have a time where we can produce this report quickly. And I think by implementing these measures, we'll be able to do that. So with that, number one, city manager, if there are any changes and updates since then, I don't think this one is complete as of today. But I believe, is it fair to say you're working towards that with?
Yes, we will be providing a report and will be a better report than you received last time. And I will take responsibility for your failure to properly communicate.
Thank you very much. Counsel, has any other comments on, on this particular task item?
On number one?
On item number one for the Jackson Avenue properties?
Okay. I know that our city manager will give an update, but I think that, is this one in regards to BSNA?
This, this one is in regards to BSNA and all records available for this, this property. The report was meant to be a single location in report style format, as clarified by the mayor. And it got bifurcated and it wasn't labeled as a report. And I think that was not well done. And that's what I'm taking responsibility for. And we're going to get that correct.
All right. The other thing is on, and I discussed this with city manager before, but I think with any record that we have, that we're working a draft on, we need to watermark those things so that we know what is a draft that's currently in process and what would be a final document.
Mayor, that is one of the points in my findings. Thank you, Ms. Jackson. She and I had an opportunity to discuss that. And that actually will be one of the recommendations.
Any other comments, Councilmember Jackson, at this time?
Well, I wasn't able to find the zipped files that we discussed. I was trying to look through and see what we see from a public standpoint as far as going through BSNA. And it's difficult when you don't know some of the things, some of the projects and that kind of thing that the group's been working on. But I would, I think it would be having implemented government systems at state, federal, and local level. I want to continue digging through the system to see if there's anything that I can find, that I can add input on as far as what it looks like public facing. Because typically, government systems are very difficult to shift through, find information, and know what all is happening. So I'm, that's kind of an ongoing project for me to try to get my hands around that. I haven't seen any of the zip files, but that's what resulted in the conversation that city manager and I had about the, having things watermarked as draft or final so that we know a document is in process, even for council that may be looking in there in regards to a project that's ongoing.
Yes. And I think in my time working through this, the BSNA software that we use is downloaded on the computers. But I think we have unlimited license, which means we own the software and put it on as many devices approved. And it would be my request that city council and our computers have access. Maybe it's there. I clicked around, could not find it, and have the same functionality so that we can quickly search. The, what I've been using is the public facing side. And it does not allow us to run our own reports, view only, not suggesting to make any edits or anything like that. Simply a view only capability with some reporting functionality that we could, we could utilize and see because that's, I think, going to make us better and more responsive to the public.
Also, Mayor?
Yes.
When we go in, in the tech world and implement systems into these environments, and I'm not sure when we got BSNA.
2019.
Thank you. I'm fairly new at this. So I'm not sure when that implementation occurred, but it certainly could have occurred with a contractor in place. And so a lot of times when implementations occur with technology into government, especially into government environments, the person that is on the vendor side implementing will go in with basic things to make it as easy as possible because of the amount of records that are out there into, in the system, the amount of database that they have to convert over to make it go live and things like that. It may be, we may be at a point where we need to look at the functionality of this and see if there are ways we can make it better. Because like I said, usually with any system implementer, you're going in with basic things. And it may be the right time to do an evaluation of that. And especially now that we have someone in IT that's with us permanently, that gives us good resource of our own to get our arms wrapped around what functionalities are we using? Are there any that we aren't that would make it easier for their public facing interface on the web, as well as the licensed copies that we have in place? And also for all record keeping?
Mayor, if I could?
Yes.
I, I think that's a good point. That kind of a review of how we use and want to use BSNA, we've learned through this investigation, there were things on there that were not helpful at all. In fact, there were things that were confusing that was on there. But we should talk about what, the purpose of having that as a public facing portal is to be helpful for people. And it should only contain information that is accurate and helpful in every regard. We don't have to see how the sausage is made. Nobody needs to see that. But those actual official record documents, those field notes about, I went out and visited the property on January 20th, you know, I wrote an email to the homeowner, whatever. Those field notes and actual official documents are really all we need to see on there. That's what we care about. That's how people can go in and look and see what's there. And I, I think if we, if we look at it through that lens, let's just clean this up and just move forward this way only.
Thank you. I am looking forward to that. And I think it's, it, it's going to be really helpful as we all adopt and become users and more involved. And so, and I'd welcome a training with the whole council if, if that would be appropriate so that we can learn the basic functionality. I've been self-taught, but I'm talking about really on the, even the reporting side and being able to look beyond just a case. You can look deep within one property or you can look citywide. And if we can do that, that's really helpful. This would have been, I think, a report in itself that would say, you know, on these addresses, go back this part in time and, you know, export all, all actions and related files. And so I think the issue here was we, we did not receive what we asked for and the reasoning did not make sense. But again, I'm happy we are trying to overcome that. And so, thank you. City council, any other comments for this particular request? Okay. With that, we can move to item number two, which is to create and distribute administrative procedures reviewed and approved by our city attorney, complying with Florida state law and city code to be followed by our city code enforcement officers. This is to be presented in a future city council meeting update. This was really about the procedures we follow today. Obviously, we have chapter, you know, 162. We've got our city code. Administratively, what are we, what are we doing internally to ensure that those are being followed, understanding those? And if they need to be changed or improved, certainly making those so that we can move forward. Certainly making those so that we can move forward. If there's any update on this, that would be appreciated.
Sure. I'm happy to report that there has been a draft presented to me. I have purposefully not begun my review of it. And the reason is because, once I finish this investigation, my findings, I'm going to be zeroing in on certain specific things that I want to see addressed in that document. And I'm going to read it with that lens on to make sure we're covering all those things. And then I'll learn what other things are in there. So I see this kind of as a next step after the findings report.
For moving forward, but as far as today, do we have any administrative procedures that we follow?
Dave?
I think Brian and I can answer that question.
Yes, sir. As of today, we have a flow chart that we utilize. It tells each code officer how to start a case, how to run through a case, and how to finish a case. We also reference, as you said earlier, Florida statute 162 governs everything that we do and it references our city code. And then our city code adds to that 162.
Yeah, I will add, though, that, you know, we've, especially during this last month or two, we've been dealing in particular with the Fillmore item. I think there are gaps or at least gray areas in those current SOPs that we have, procedural processes, that need to be eliminated. And we will be doing that. As Mr. Morley indicated, we're going to be kind of focusing in on those areas that perhaps are a little gray and that we may not run into every day. So we're going to be, we're going to be addressing that to augment what we do have in place already.
Yes, Mayor Protam.
Is it, can we get a copy of the flow chart so we can better understand how you guys work?
Absolutely. That was actually provided, I think, in the March meeting.
Can you email it separately to the council and copy me?
Of course.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Protam and anybody on the council, if you have any questions once you get that and you have a chance to look at it, just because you can give Brian or I a call. We'd be happy to talk with you or meet with you and help you out.
Thank you. So the administrative procedures, I have a copy. I don't recall if it was the last meeting or if it was one back, but this hasn't been anything that we have used as a tool for the public to see what our process is. So it's online and you can say, here's how we operate to set some expectations for the folks who are the respondents on what's expected. I think this has been an internal document that, as an idea, would be good to not just email to us but to make a public document and even duplicate it as something on the website in the appropriate place that says, here's, here's how we follow. Here's what we do. And they can figure out where they are in the process, yes.
Are you speaking, are you speaking of the flow chart? Is that the flow chart you're looking at?
Yes, this, if that's the flow chart.
Yes, that's, I believe that's already on our website.
Okay.
I think it may be an updated version. I'm not sure. That's on our website. It updates every so often because of code changes and stuff to that effect. But for the most part, it's there. I do believe it is on the website. I'll double-check that and if it's not, it'll be up today.
Yeah, I'd also like to, I'd also like to add that once Mr. Morley finishes with the standard operating procedures, the updated SOP manual, that will definitely be on the webpage too. So we all understand, we all understand the process and the rules of the game. So there's no, well, I assumed this or I thought that or what are you guys doing? It's going to be right there so everybody can see exactly what the processes are and timeframes and expectations.
And to that point, this is something the mayor and I have talked about extensively for the last two years, actually, and more than that. It's about establishing metrics. And I think that's where a lot of this is going to come from, those timeframes. If we establish a timeframe from the time that, you know, a complaint is made to the first visit, from the time the first visit is made to the time the notice of violation, from the time notice of violation to the time it goes to special magistrate. If we establish ideal timeframes for those, understanding that, you know, you're going to have days people are sick. Believe me, I know that. You can't get out there on that day. But if you have the idea that, hey, we're aiming for a one-week turnaround for this and then we have that capability in the reporting that the mayor's talking about in BSNA to, hey, let's look at that report. Did we hit that? Was it close or was it way out? We didn't touch a case for a year, but this person we touched with in four days. You know, that's the kind of stuff I want us to be able to hit on.
Yeah, totally agree. I think, I think that'll be really helpful information for staff, for me, for Brian, for the council, for the city manager, and for the public. That's the kind of information that we want to see. Totally agree.
And we're doing that. I mean, we're jumping into that now. We've done a lot to repair, I guess, the system and the way we were using it. However, we also have to keep in mind at all times that case, each case is completely different. Each case has a completely different timeframe. Where one case could go a year, some other cases may not.
And those kind of explanation things should be able to be understood with a deeper dive into the field notes about why this was this or why this was that. Understanding, nothing goes like clockwork ever. There's always situations, but it should be able to, if you run a report and something comes up that should have been done in two weeks and it was six months, you should be able to look at the field notes and say, well, here's why. All these things happened. And then a reasonable person would say, that makes sense. I get that. Maybe it's about how we trigger the clock each time. And I'm not sure how we're going to build that box, but we need to build something that removes any perception that anybody could possibly be targeted or felt differently in code enforcement. And that's been the mayor's goal all along here and that's my goal as well.
Does this flow chart, this was something we created internally as a tool to use, but I assume it has not got to our city attorney yet?
Yes, sir. That was actually created by Todd Morley back in a long time ago.
Kate Lator was the attorney then and she reviewed it and approved it.
And since then, since then I've.
What years did she work for us? It was '07, '08? The original one, when Kate Lator was here?
Yes.
That was one of my associates. I mean, that document, it's old, but it's a basic flow chart of the process.
And I've updated it since.
Like to include the magistrate, for example?
Yes, to include the changes.
I mean, it lays out a basic process, but every, I said, every case is different. It's also the complaint, the priority of a code enforcement case, all those variables that go into evaluating.
Yeah, I mean, as an example, we have to allow for officer discretion. If we have a widower who has an issue with a IP, a property maintenance issue and she does, she's living on a very fixed income. It's difficult for us to, you know, well, I'm just saying that everybody, there's different circumstances and situations that we have to work with. And if we always keep in mind that compliance is our goal, then that will play out.
I found it, I mean, you can read 162 in our code and, or you can take five minutes and read this, you know, and visualize it and make sense. I think it's a very helpful tool. I think getting this updated and using it as a standardized procedure is really going to help. And ultimately, when we, item number one was to request all the actions for those properties in code enforcement that happened. And item number two is then to put it next to our administrative procedures. And that's what I think will help provide findings and opportunities, number five.
Yeah, and in layman's terms, what I think the mayor's referring to is there's some history out there. It goes way back, eight years maybe, about things that it doesn't show that these things were corrected. We don't know why they weren't corrected or it doesn't tell the whole story. So when we have these documents together, we can piece together that whole story.
Okay, council, we are on item number two. Create and distribute administrative procedures reviewed and approved by our city attorney, complying with Florida law and city code to be followed by our code enforcement officers. Procedure is pretty much what we're looking for. City attorney?
No, I mean, I'll be, I think as Todd said, I mean, he's going to look at the draft and then I'll help staff best I can with the administrative procedures. I also wanted to note that you may recall that in 2019, the city code was substantially revised to amend the city's code to be very consistent with the state law and to remove inconsistencies to try to streamline the code. So, you know, that was done as well. And that's how you also went the special magistrate route as well. So I just wanted to just note that because there's been some work done in the code already. And I don't think, like administrative procedure-wise, I'm not aware of any code revisions that need to be made at this point. It's all more like administrative and operational.
Yes, and that's why I submitted the SOP because it's more of how we do it from A to Z.
Yeah, strictly administrative, not, I mean, maybe that becomes a recommendation. I think we're hearing early on, not needed, but thank you. Anything else, council, on this one? If not, we can move on. Okay. So item number three, for our city code enforcement employees, provide a listing required certifications, training, and ongoing continuing education and achieve certifications, training, and ongoing continuing education. So again, number one, we wanted to get the facts on what happened over a period of time. Number two, we wanted to see what is our process, our procedures. And number three, who are the people representing the city going out as far as credentials goes? That was, I think, provided. Senior enforcement officer Palmer provided a list for him and Officer Robinson. My only question is, is there any required, and this might have been answered, ongoing education that is required to maintain your credentials?
Yes, that's, we have to maintain every two years 16 CEUs, which is continuing education units. And we have to obtain those every two years. And that's through, there's different courses that you can take to obtain those. 16 CEUs in the two years. Florida itself, there is no requirement to be certified to be a code officer in the state of Florida. However, there is a requirement with the city to at least have Level One from our Florida Association of Code Enforcement, which is abbreviated as FACE, as I spoke of on the first meeting. And every, myself, two of the code officers currently have Level One. We have a new code officer who will be going to Level One hopefully in the next couple of months. We'll get him through. So I currently have all four levels and the other officer has three levels. Hopefully, we'll get him his last one and then we'll work on the, our newest.
And mayor, I might add that I routinely see these performance evaluations coming in with recommended proceed with Face Two or Face Three as a goal for employees.
And so, when you say Level One is what our code requires, but your Level Four, for lack of better words, is that appropriate?
Yes, sir. They're different, on the different levels, like Level One is, it's, I think it's code enforcement, like basically 101, and then you have an administrative section and then you have a field operations section and then legal section, I think there is. So each level is your, basically, it's just your standard and what you need to know when you get to the code enforcement at that point in time in your, in your career, if you want to call it. Then after that, it's all just keeping up with that. It's, once you get to that point, it's keeping up with that, those different things. So every time that you go through a class or you go through a course or we go to a conference, sorry, you'll get that. You can get that, those classes, the same classes that you got in your Level One, Two, Three, and Four, you can get those at the conferences. Or you can, the officers can go online and they can do those classes online and they get recertified on all of those classes. The best part of that is they actually add more classes than what we normally get in a standard Level One or standard Level Two. So now we can, you know, they can branch out and they can get more involved with other stuff. Little bit better education on your going out and actually doing your investigations and stuff to that effect.
And I think at the bottom of the agenda, it was talked about working towards our willingness to provide resources for code enforcement and to increase the staff or repurpose. And I think that's something that we're going to be looking at in the budget.
We are. And just another sneak peek that I'm looking into is I intend to produce an agenda item for the May council meeting. That will be a proposal from a company to provide third-party services in the code enforcement department. This is a company that does that. They provide building inspection but also code enforcement. And we would piggyback their hourly rate off of another Brevard County city. But my thought here, and when I shape this up and present it to council, it will be an opportunity for council to meet this individual or this individuals from this company, ask them questions about who they are, what they do, what their experience is, and have them appointed a person in the code enforcement department who's there really to help us have an objective, third-party view of how we do things in code enforcement and other areas. And then learning, sitting with the staff, learning what operations from the administrative perspective, taking those notes and then talking with staff and say, oh, have you thought about this? Have you thought about that? What do you do for here? And then at the end of that period, coming and reporting to me, here's what I see as best practices in the industry. And I would, of course, share that with council. And then I want to take that document that would be worked on collaboratively with code enforcement department and this company. Now we've got a third-party objective review of how we do things in the code enforcement department. And that's a service that we paid for. And I think that'd be, depending on what it costs, I think it'd be well worth the money.
Thank you. I think that, yes, the ongoing education, I'd assume the city pays for that for every two years to get your six, it sounds like about eight hours a year on average. And there's an annual conference. And I think as far as resources go there, we are, I am at least thumbs up to continue to support and it's a changing world out there. New codes, new ways of doing things. And I would say that this one is complete. It would be helpful and I think, and still something to showcase is, if willing and appropriate, to put those credentials up on the website. Because, you know, when you read through these, I believe they're continuing education certifications that you got to meet the overall, these are all things that I think sort of shed a positive light on the types of education our officers are going through. And with that, I'm done with my comments, but I would say that this one is complete. Other than, you know, the dates, that was the only thing. But now knowing every two years, that makes sense. And the third officer who will be pursuing Level One is, is good. So any other comments?
Just have one quick question for Mr. Palmer. Is there anything else we can provide? Is there any additional education, any other tools that you need or you feel you need?
We're afforded all, we can technically go to any class or anything that's offered. It doesn't have to be just in the realm of code enforcement. It could be in inspecting. It could be anything. I mean, we have that opportunity. I mean, we have that opportunity. The city provides us that opportunity to go to basically any course that we really, you know, that, that would benefit code enforcement, of course. We don't want to go to, you know, something else. But yeah, that's, we, 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 the, the city gives us the tools to do everything. Sometimes we're a little low on manpower, but we may do.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Any final comments, city manager, on this one? Thank you. We can say that one's complete. Which is excellent. Number four, distribute a monthly BSNA report of all open code enforcement cases and an annual report of closed enforcement cases include other important data provided by BSNA such as date created status and/or any other information necessary to monitor. This, the update we received was that a monthly report will be distributed via memo beginning April 1st, 2024 to provide the requested data. City Manager?
Do you have a status update on that?
Yes, I did a, went into BSNA, did a deep dive on BSNA so we could clean it up, get that information in there, put pertinent information in there instead of what we had in the past. So I'm, I'm actually, I mean, I have, there's, there's nineteen hundred cases in there. I'm working on the open ones now so we can get that information. I do have that report ready. I can run that report today. I cannot guarantee you all the dates are in there at this point in time. I'm still running through that. We have eighty, I think it's something like that, seventy to eighty case, open cases that I, I have to get dates in there for. But I wanted to give a good enough, you know, the, the proper information. I didn't want to give erroneous information or information that wasn't, you know, that, you know, that we maybe care about, but you probably, well, why am I getting this information? So I can run that report today, and I'll be more than happy to send that to the council today.
And even watermarking it as draft or, or some sort of indication that I think it sounds like you were able to generate, produce the report, but when it runs, you see, you know, that's not the correct date. That field might be blank and you want to have it consistent so it shows up well and it's actually usable. I totally understand that. And I think we are, everything I heard, this is just the beginning, but we can get something that, that I think we, we like and makes sense. And this is going to be extremely helpful, but like you and I have said, I think the data's only as good as what people put in. And that's a natural thing. It, it's really all about the ability to run a report, I think, from our level and certainly our city manager's level. And so I appreciate you paying attention to the details so that, that it can be right. And I do look forward to that.
And I think one thing, just keep in mind that when a report like this is run, it's in, when, when you see the report, you see it in a, in a snapshot of time. Okay? Cases are ever evolving, ever moving, ever until the very end. And then, so a lot of times when you look at this report, you'll see things like, oh, this date and this date don't match, or this dates, there's no date after this date. Why is that? These, these cases are moving forward at all times, you know, and, and being, I guess you could say massaged a little bit. So, so if I just, I put it out there, if you see some date or missing, or it's inaccurate, or you think it's inaccurate or something to that effect, you could always reach out to me. I can explain the dates to you or explain why there isn't a date there, or why there is a date there. But I'll be more than happy to put a watermark on it, and I'll be more than happy to send that to the council.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask the council's indulgence, if, if, if you will, to give us a day or two to get with the city manager. I'm not sure Todd has actually seen the final version of the report, and he may have a little better feel for exactly what the council wants. So we can commit to getting that out in the next several days. But I would like to have Todd look at it before it goes out the door.
I have a couple of questions.
Councilmember Jackson?
So I wanted to address you, Mr. Palmer. Nineteen hundred open items, right?
No, ma'am, there's nineteen hundred total cases.
Total, okay.
There's about seven.
Goodness, I heard that and that sounded way high. So the, so it gives closed cases in the report as well as the open ones?
I run two different, I would, not I run, I would run two different reports. I'd run an open one, and then I'd run a closed one. The closed one's gonna have a lot less dates because we didn't do that in the past. And we're actually focusing on the open cases right now and populating that information first. And then once that information is accurate and populated, then we'll go move on to the closed cases and see if we can get, because some of those dates may not still be available for closed cases. We got this, this program back in early 2019 is when we actually started using it. So there's probably some cases in there that just don't have certain dates that, that, that we're tracking now.
Understand. And so when we implemented this in 2019, how did we merge the data into the new system from whatever old system we used? So I'm specifically trying to get an understanding of gaps, you know, from previously. Did y'all have to do some manual entry to get some of these things changed over? And did we pick up a certain period of time that we converted into the system, or did we start from scratch?
We took the old system. They were able to run reports out of the old system. We sent them to BSNA, and BSNA was able to upload them into the system itself. It kind of, it, it tried to keep the old case numbers to a certain extent. It tried to keep all the information. A lot of the information didn't correspond with the information in the new. So we lost, you know, we lost a lot of information in there. If you look at a report and it says, and it only gives you a port, a, a partial case number, that right there is one of the hiccups that it had when it came over. Didn't give us a full case number sometimes. So there was information lost. There was information that was put into, into like a paragraph form. So you had to search through the whole paragraph through the computer jargon to find the actual information. It also created a lot of inspections that we never, that weren't ever put into the system. So once it was converted over, it looked like we had, like on one case that I just cleaned up, it had like twenty inspections on it. The case was solved in the field. It didn't have twenty inspections on it, so I had to go through and I had to get rid of all those inspections. So there was a, it's a lot of, there was a lot of work to go with that.
And, and I appreciate you giving me this info because new systems, when you convert it, doesn't always do it cleanly. Number one. Number two, sometimes it doesn't gather all the data. So us understanding gaps as a council is important because data is as good as what's in your database. And so it created extra work for, do you think that from 2019 to now, you've gotten the things that were pending from the conversion? Like you said, you had all those inspections. Have those all been cleaned up, you know, for those that converted over that were not needed? Or do you think there's any data out there that's sitting there that still needs cleanup from the transition from the old system to the new?
I'm sure there is some data out there that still needs to be taken out of the system. So a lot of the old cases that were there in that, in the previous system that got moved over, a lot of those cases were in compliance at that point in time. So we didn't do, we didn't, we didn't deal with those cases because we were ever moving forward. We weren't going back to try to collect data or to change stuff in the, that, that got moved over in the past because we had a large caseload. We've always had a large caseload here, even back when I was the only code officer. I mean, it was a large caseload. And so, so, so it's difficult to manage that caseload and then go back and try to fix things where we're already closed.
Right.
So if you look at it for, in the standpoint right now, I don't think there's any case that came out of it that we started in the old system that we still have now, except for maybe a lean that, that, that is hung out there somewhere.
Okay. So we may still have database integrity issues from this conversion to the state, right? Because you moved forward based on what you were working on. So, Mr. Mayor, this is something we may need to look at is, because if our, if our public are going out looking in BSAF or BSNF, and it's not giving data with integrity, how are they gonna know what they're looking at as?
It's more, it's more of a lack of data than it is an inaccurate data.
Okay.
It's so, I mean, you could possibly go out and look for a case that was back in, that was transferred from one, the one system to the other system. You're, you're not gonna, I mean, it's not gonna show you like, well, this, this was done on this day, this was on this day. It's gonna be more of a, you're looking at it going, okay, nothing ever happened on this case, and why not? Back in the, you know, back in 2016, 2015, whatever, you know, why, why didn't anything happen? Well, it did. It just didn't transfer from the old system to the new system because there, the, the fields were different. The, the way they, the way we put stuff in was completely different. So it's not a, it's not like you have erroneous information, it's just that you have a lack of information.
And in knowing that, do we have what information that is not there, that we have a lack of from the old system that didn't convert over? Do we have that defined with procedures of how to obtain those documents out there for the public?
We are putting, every one of the files, every one of the cases that we had in the old system are being scanned into Laserfish. So if there's any case out there that's, that's, that you look at and you're like, well, this case was created in 2016, but it doesn't show anything, it would be in Laserfish. You should reach out and look at it, and, or you could reach out and look at it in Laserfish. We do have some files that still are being scanned as we speak. I mean, we had a lot of, of, of files that we needed to get scanned. And this was back before we were really into a more of a computer-based system, so.
Right.
But yes, you could, you could find that information.
Okay, so knowing y'all are working on that, which I'm happy to hear, because none of, system transitions are never fun. Knowing that it, how many open code, or open cases do we have right now?
I would say off the top of my head, probably around seventy to seventy-five, if not more.
Okay.
I'd have to double check, though. I think it was seventy-five the last time I looked.
Okay, that sounds a lot better than when you hear big numbers, doesn't it? And knowing that you're doing things to address the, the old database, you know, ensuring that it's getting into the system is, is a big thing. And my last question was possibly for you, city manager, is when we implemented the system, I know Brian knows this, he's worked, he works on it all the time, but did you have, or did the vendor provide training classes for people that interact with the system?
Yeah, Brian can talk more specifically.
And did we have an implementation, a, a technician that helped implement the features of the system with the city?
Yes, we had numerous technicians here. They stayed here for, I, I think it was a couple of weeks with us and went through everything. You can only, I think, go through so much when, with the system. Everybody knows that a system that, that deals with as much as this system does is pretty much built kind of generic to meet everybody's needs. So we go in, after they show us this, this, this is how it works, then we would go in and we can tweak some things to help us out or what have you. But they're always available. I reach out to them on a weekly, if not daily, basis and ask them how to do this and how to do that. There is a, in the system itself, there's actually training videos, and there's actually walkthrough where they can walk you through anything that you need to know or anything that you need to do. You click on it, it gives you a little, literally an itemized how-to-do thing. So we have, the, the resources are there. We have been trained on it. I've trained people on it. It's, it's a.
And so for council, those are those tutorials that you pointed me to, right?
Yes, and those tutorials, I actually went into those and looked at them, and they, they walk you right through how to do everything, so.
So those are available for us as a council to go through. And I just wanted to make sure everyone knew because I, Brian recently pointed me to them. But I had questions on the conversion because as, as Mr. Palmer says, a lot of times when you convert from an old system to a new, not everything moves over. We were looking at older systems and records from sixty years ago that we've had, you know, over time. So I was curious about those things and wanted to get clarification. So I understood when I'm looking at reports that he'll provide in the future, that it is gonna be to back to a certain timeframe, and not all things may have converted over the way that you would think, even though they converted. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make one, oh, I'm sorry, Todd.
I just wanted to tag on to something Councilmember Jackson brought up. I think you've underscored that there's, there's this gap, and Brian clarified it, and that we're in a period of, of closing that gap. I think it's important we put some guardrails and safeguards in place in terms of disclaimers so people understand where things are and that they're in transition. So for instance, one would be, hey, BSNA doesn't have any records here for anything before this day. Another one would be, hey, if you're going into Laserfish and you're looking at these files, keep in mind that you're getting part of the story here. The other part of the story may be here. So people's expectations are managed, that what they're going through, we're trying to fix this. We, we acknowledge there was this data transition gap. We're trying to get through this, and you may find some things that don't just perfectly sync up. If that's the case, please call code enforcement, send them an email, they'll meet with you and go through it and get you your records.
Yes, and that's one thing I just wanted to mention. Last thing, I guess, is public records requests, they're still alive and well, and they work really well if you get ahold of us. I'm more than happy to give all the information that I have that's not located or can't be located on the, in, in BSNA. Because some information just isn't in BSNA, okay? We didn't have it until twenty nineteen, early 2019, I think you said. I mean, that's when it really started, we started working in it. So there's a lot of information that we don't have in BSNA. So public records requests, if you, if you ask us, we're more than happy to give you all the information that we have.
Thank you. Councilmember Willis?
Yeah, I think it's critical for us to understand that the previous system was built as a least common denominator for multiple municipalities. And what we do, what the city staff does, might be more involved. But when you do the data mapping over to BSNA, it's, it, it may not come over, it may not have been there. And so BSNA is gonna show a vacant data point. And if, and I know that BSNA would have mapped any data that was possible to a notation section. So if it's not there, it's not there. And I think we need to commend code enforcement for trying to rectify the issue. It's going to take a lot of manual process, and I appreciate your efforts on that. Thank you.
Councilmember Davis or Mayor Lieutenant Kellum?
I just had a question on the monthly report distributed by a memo. April 1st. I did not remember getting that. Did we get a memo?
No, I think that's.
I think that's what we've been discussing is we, Brian is prepared to push that out. He could do it today, but I'm hoping to get with Mr. Morley and show, and get him to basically approve the format so the information that we get to the council is usable. It's comprehensive enough to give you a, give the council a, a sense of what's going on. But no, that, that did not occur on April 1st.
So are we going to, once you get it approved and all, every month, the first of the month, we'll get a?
Definitely. Once, once we get the parameters of this report, it'll be as simple as, I'd like to say, as hitting the button and popping, popping it out. But yes, it'll definitely be once a month.
It's about building the template.
It's about building the template.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Could I, could I ask, could we not generate these reports electronically and disperse them to council rather than printed?
Yeah.
I don't think printing, yes. I think in a perfect world, we'd be go, be able to go on and just click our own report and just view it at any time. And if they're providing them for us, I think that's totally fine.
And if they're providing them for us, I think that's totally fine, electronically.
In fact, I would rather, I would rather have my copy electronically than a printed piece. I've got a filing cabinet full of paper I'm trying to get rid of now, so.
Would you prefer your agenda packets that way, too?
Yes, but I need special reading material from time to time, so.
Okay.
Councilmember Davis, any comments?
No, I have questions, but I'll ask later.
My concluding comments are, I appreciate, I think it was IMS, that was the last system that we used, yeah, any fields that that provided. I remember the.
I'm sorry, it was Springbrook that we used before that. IMS was our first one. Yes, IMS was our two back.
There was reports being provided out of Springbrook up till the end. And then when we moved over to BSNA, this was going to be a better system. And so the reports from Springbrook, I think, were a little bit more comprehensive. Whatever that final export was of all that data, account-wide, or whatever those were, my hope would be that any missed opportunities to match up fields, and even create new fields in BSA, maybe Springbrook had a field that was really valuable, but my understanding is you can create the new field and map it up. Sounds like we're moving towards that, but I think we can always go back and maybe even clean up and merge data. Because the reason that's important is, I would like to see beyond 2016 on one account. And scanned is great, just to have the record, but it's really difficult and cumbersome when we have to access our records by public records request. And working towards not only all the data that's important per case, but going back in time, that file, wherever that's living, that original export from Springbrook, perhaps there are some opportunities for fields that, even if it was a third-party integrator, or someone who has skill sets beyond us that could come in and give us the ability to essentially merge the two systems, so we don't lose everything prior to 2016. And for the benefit of our city staff, I think it would be extremely valuable if you had the ability to go back in time, specifically on this property alone. That was a big point. And the things that were occurring during that period of time today, we can't see. And I think that's, that's to, that's an opportunity to improve, so.
We need to keep in mind that Springbrook was a small snapshot in time. We didn't have it very long. We had IMS longer.
Okay.
IMS and Springbrook no longer, as far as I know, we no longer have access to those. We stopped paying, stopped utilizing them. I know IMS we did. I don't think I have anything, except for a spreadsheet from IMS, was something that I did for the permitting department. Other than that, it's, our records retention is ten years. If it goes back prior, you know, further back than ten years, if it wasn't put in Laserfish, which it should have been, it would probably be difficult to find anything back prior to ten years ago. So that's just kind of a, you know, they do, you know, we do get rid of records every now and again, and for our records retention and stuff, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I, Mayor, I think I hear what you're saying, and the goal is just to get as much of this information into the public realm as possible, so the council and the residents can run their own reports as needed. And so, yeah, I think with that, with that as a goal, I think we'll, we'll try to, we'll try to provide that.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So just for Brian and Dave, we do not have the original import, exports from those previous two systems?
CSV file?
Yeah, well, in whatever format they had it.
I don't know how BSNA, or what they did with the input on that. BSNA did that for us. They took all that, those files and everything, and they ran that, they put that in the system. And it all came into the system. IMS, I don't have anything from IMS for Code Enforcement. I do for building, because I pulled it. I don't know what Springbrook did with it. We give, when you get a new system, as you know, when you get a new system, you, they ask for certain things, you give them that information, and then they do what they do with it. It's their system, they know how to put it in there. I know what I did back in, when we went from IMS to Springbrook, I wanted to capture the permitting, because there was a gap in time. So I wanted to make sure that we captured that. I don't know about the others. The, like you said, the CSV, I don't know where the files are.
I was just curious, because as technologies change, you can adapt some of that older data.
Of course.
Structure and.
Exactly.
Mm-hmm.
Looking for a workaround, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes. If BSNA migrated the data from Springbrook or IMS, I think that they had to get our file, that we owned that raw data. And if BSNA has it, and they exported it so that they could import it into their system, maybe that's a path. But to be determined. It is, I think, a good first step to work towards everything we discussed, with the ability to create a report. And I have nothing else on this.
Did you want to go to point five, Mayor?
Yeah, I think that's, number four is complete?
We.
Or we are finished discussing item number four, and yes, point number five.
Point number five is presenting findings or opportunities to be distributed to City Council in ways the city can improve our community development department as it relates to Code Enforcement. And the more I go through this, Mayor, I see the process of that being, after the findings report is distributed to council and discussed, I think the best way to do that is for me to produce a conclusions and recommendations report, coming out of that. And I think the conclusions and recommendations report, it needs to kind of follow the same iterative process that the findings report has. In other words, me meeting with staff, what's a great recommendation? What works? The things I've already talked about, that I'm talking to council about, sometimes we, some things we're talking about one-on-one, we'll continue those discussions, but also talking with community members like Peg about, you know, what are your thoughts on this? The conclusions and recommendations document is going to be a first stab at, here's what we learned, and here's what we're gonna fix, here's how we're gonna fix that. But there may be other things that come out of that. But this one is about everything related to the experiences at Jackson. So I would, I would, I would retitle item number five, conclusions and recommendations. I would say, let's look for a deliverable on that, probably in the June timeframe, Mayor.
June?
That's what I'm hoping for, yeah.
Well, it was really helpful, I think, when you put the updates in the right-hand column as we're reading for March, if that's something you want.
Yeah, I would add.
Like the May 7th, if we can get an update with those revisions or proposed, that's really all we need to do, is go down the line with the latest update. And I don't think we need, I mean, these can be deleted out, and the new ones can be put in, you know, the update. But as far as change in findings and opportunities to.
Leave the left-hand column, just update the right-hand column.
Okay. Yeah, I think this is the one we're, we'll be waiting on, and. Any comments on number five, council? I think you may. So with, with that going through, taking a step back and looking at both of these, again, thank you all for taking the time to come together. I hope we never have to do this again. And I think at the last meeting, we talked about keeping it in front of us, and the big picture here is, yes, there's two street names, but we're talking, and towards the end, I think, about making our, our city better, and auditing where our resources and time go, and certainly the stress and strain that's around these areas naturally, due to the nature of the work. But I have learned a lot since January 27th, and I've, and I've heard, I think, our city administration has as well. And I look forward to being able to respond to these quicker. And I think, while this one might take a while, I think, moving forward, they're gonna come much quicker, and we can be much more responsive, so that we can provide the citizens, I think, what they deserve. And there is, I guess, two weeks between now and May 7th, and my hope is to be supportive in any way that I can, and to continue to sit in on meetings, if that's helpful. If it's not, I certainly need to get out of the way, and thank you for the opportunities to do so far. And I really just want to emphasize that I am, I know that there's been pain in this process, but I am optimistic that on the other side, if we can stick with it, it'll be well worth it.
And I want to thank council for your deliberateness in all of this. I especially want to thank Peg and the members of the community, and the Fillmore Town Home owners, who have been patient through all this, for your help and patience. I also would be remiss if I didn't thank staff, because they've been going through this pain with me. And we've been uncovering things and discovering things ourselves, and I have every confidence that the staff will get us through that.
Thank you. Mayor Pertim?
Yeah, I wanted to circle back for a minute, looking through these papers, and on the Fillmore project, you know, we talked about the contractor and meeting with them. Have we established who exactly the contractor is for Fillmore?
We're talking with ABC Inc., LLC, ABC LLC, is that the name of it?
Yeah, I believe they're LLC. Are they insured and all that?
Yes.
As the contractor for that?
Yeah, they're a licensed contractor in the state of Florida.
General contractor.
Yes, GC, yes.
So that's the people that you'll be dealing with, or?
Yes, yes, specifically. And frankly, that's one of the things that we learned, is we need to be discussing and dealing with the right person on these projects, and we're tightening that up.
That would be point number one.
It'll be right up there.
That's gonna be in the findings report.
That's all I had. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, concluding? Any reports?
I just.
I have a comment.
Oh.
John, it can, it can, we could probably wait.
Sure. I would like to thank Lisa here, for working all weekend, to connect all the dots.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was nice.
City manager?
No, sir.
Any comments? Okay. Good. Good to go with that. Meeting adjourned.